Welcome to the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include, from District 1, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District 2, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District 3, Commissioner Plinton Johnson; from District 4, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District 5, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District 6, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Dougherty County Commission meeting.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right. Let's go ahead and call it a order, the Dougherty County Commission Regular Meeting for June 7th, 2021. Begin with a roll call. I note for the record that all commissioners are present and in person. If I would ask everyone, please stand for the prayer and then the pledge. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we have to come together to do work for the citizens of Dougherty County. Thank you for the resources that you have provided us with. Thank you for the healing that you are providing to our community and the growth we are continuing to experience. Please continue to allow us to see more, more light and less darkness in the years to come. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes. Consider for action the minutes of the May 10th work session. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? They're being known. Call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Delegations, this is where the commission will hear comments on those items pertaining to Dougherty County for which public hearings have been held or scheduled. We ask everyone to be brief, to the point, and consider it a time for others. First delegation is review of the group health plan and its impact on the fiscal year 22 budget health plan. Consultant Tammy Starkey will address. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Yeah. Good morning, Ms. Starkey. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Great. Thank you.
So I'm going to review this morning the presentation you should have for the fiscal year 22 healthcare budget review. Starting out in the first section there, we review the health plan experience that is impacting the funding necessary for the self-funded health plan with Dougherty County. On Slide 2, you'll see a year-over-year comparison for the calendar year or plan year 2018, 2019, and 2020, in total paid cost of the plan for claims incurred within the health plan and the additional programs that supplement the coverage. Here you'll see the increase from 2019 to 2020 in green for the total cost increased from 5.1 million to 7.69 million. So about a $2.5 million increase in total spend on the plan. However, we do have the stop-loss coverage that protects the county and the health plan from excess claims expense or any claims over $175,000 during the year. So you'll see that reimbursement brought the total spend down to 5.8 million. So about 1.8 million in stop-loss reimbursements for the plan. So when we compare the, the total spend or total expense of 2.5 million, the actual liability increase is 763,000 plan year over plan year. So about a 15% increase. As we look at the next slide 3, you'll see that trend just to see where we are year-over-year again for the plan year or the calendar year and how we're tracking so far for the current plan year 2021. So you'll see there for 2020, that yellow line spike that we saw starting in April, really when COVID began to impact the health plan. And then again, another large spike in December of 2020 where we saw a very large claim hit, all in that one month, about $1.4 million. Again, anything over 175,000 is reimbursed by the stop-loss coverage, but this is showing just total spend on the plan. And then the dark green line shows where we're tracking through March for the current plan year 2021. The next slide, you'll see the 36-month rolling trend for medical and prescription drug claims. So this is where we really see the impact of those large claims, the spikes that we experienced in 2020. For example, you'll see that April of 2020, 1.2 million dollars in claim spend, and then again, that spike in December of 1.9 million. So when we remove these large, high-cost claimants, the plan averages about 300 to 400,000 dollars a month outside of those high claims. And then these last three months that we see here on the chart are our first three months of the plan year, we see again a spike in March, about 761,000. That is due to a large COVID claim that hit in March of about $200,000. So on Slide 5, this really gives you the comparison of how high-cost claimants are impacting the total funding and the spend within the health plan. So this slide compares year-over-year what our total medical claims expense is, or the bar in purple compared to high-cost claims. And here we're defining high-cost claims as any member that incurs claims over 8,000, $87,500, which is half of our stop-loss threshold of 175,000. So you'll see for 2020, our total medical spend of a little over $7 million. Out of that 3.8 million was accumulated by high-cost claims. So 54% of our total spend was attributed to high-cost claimants, which is 14 members on the plan. We have about 670 members in total. So 14 members here driving 54% of the spend. When we compare that to 2019, our high-cost claims accounted for 39% of the spend. And so far in 2020, 36% of the spend is attributed to high-cost claims. So that's where our norms are, typically 30 to 40%. So 54% was really an anomaly to see on the health plan in 2020. Slide 6 shows just the makeup of the primary health conditions of these high-cost claims, how much was paid for each claim, as well as the amount that was over stop-loss. So you'll see here, 3.8 million out of that was the 1.8 million that was reimbursed by the stop-loss reinsurance coverage. And then to point out as well, in that second column, you'll see if that member is still active on the health plan. So important to note that our top two claims, the sepsis claim that was 1.4 million, and then that second liver claim are no longer active on the plan, as well as the number eight and number 13. So four out of 14 members have terminated off of the health plan. And then Slide 7, you'll see the claims year-to-date through March for 2021. We do have two high-cost claims. Both of these have hit the stop-loss threshold, so they are currently being reimbursed for any claims over 175,000 to date and will continue to be reimbursed as they incur future claims. Number 2 was the one I mentioned earlier that hit all in March of about $200,000 is a sepsis and COVID-19 claim. We know that COVID has had a large impact on the claims of the plan and the total spend. So Slide 8 shows a total financial impact of 2020 and 2021 of about $4 million in paid claims due to COVID-19. So about 900,000 are for testing, and then about 3.1 million are for the actual treatment of those that were diagnosed or exposed to COVID-19. You'll see majority of that falls with an inpatient hospitalization, with those most severe claims paying out at about $2.3 million during the, this time period. And we are seeing a declining trend in the spend of, for COVID-19, so that is positive impact for the plan. Majority of those, 3.3 million of this spend was in 2020. So so far, a little over 700,000 in the first few months of 2021. And you can see that here on Slide 9 of really that impact of COVID-19, we're, we're seeing a declining trend of testing and confirmed cases and even those with exposure. On Slide 10, we've got an overview of the cost stabilization actions that were implemented with this renewal for the plan year 2021. So in January, we reviewed the funding of the plan and identified at that time that the plan was indeed underfunded by what had been set prior and as well as how the claims were trending. So with that, we took necessary action to improve the funding status of the plan in January. With that, we removed about $358,000 in unnecessary fixed costs that were made up of commissions, payments, overlap in services. So took a first pass there to decrease costs on the plan. We also made plan design changes to reduce the funding increase that was necessary. So that was the savings of about 366,000. We did make adjustments at that time, effective January 1st, an increase to employee contributions and the county's contribution to the plan to realign the funding of what was going to be necessary for the plan year. We also improved the stop-loss reimbursement process because we saw how important the timely reimbursement of these large claims is to the overall cash flow of the plan. And so now with the process that's in place, claims are paid much more accurately and timely, paid in a matter of days versus weeks with the prior arrangement. And then the wellness program initiative that we implemented for this year, the goal there is to identify early risk factors so that patients are able to take advantage of the excellent resources the county provides within your health plan and within your clinic to really take action to improve their health when those conditions are lifestyle-related. So at this point, we've got 69% of the population that is participating in that plan, in the wellness program, with their biomarker screening and their health risk assessment. So for the budget projections for the fiscal year, our actuaries take into account the last 24 months of claims. So we understand that 2020 was really an anomaly with the impact of these large claims, the impact of COVID on the total spend and the expense of the plan. So they do look at 24 months of claims. They take into account the stop-loss reimbursements that reduce the overall spend for the, the plan for the county and the employees and the plan design changes that we put in place for this plan year 2021 to help right the, the trend of the overall plan. So here you'll see the actuarial projections. They project the medical and prescription drug claims to be about 5.3 million. Admin expenses, that's your administrative fee, your stop-loss, about 1.1 million. Your additional program expenses with script sourcing, know-the-cost surgery plus these supplemental programs that help control your costs and provide enhanced benefits to the participants, about 670,000. Your wellness clinic, about 480,000. And then your dental claims and the admin on that self-funded dental plan are also rolled in at about 340,000. So total fiscal year cost of the medical and the dental plans projected about 7.9 million. Employee and retiree contributions factored in at the increase that we implemented as of January 1st of 2021. So this is not accounting for any additional increases into the new year is 1.1 million. So looking at county net cost is 6,786. Any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Starkey. Very good presentation. Now move on to the next delegation, CEO of the Georgia Music Association, Henry Thomas. He's present to update the commission on the upcoming event in the community.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Of course, my name is Henry Thomas. I'm from Macon, Georgia, founder and CEO for Georgia Music Association. Georgia Music, we're born out of desire to see more positive and spiritual music, videos and DVDs helping shape the mind of our children, young people, and old folk moral and spiritual value. In 2017, we went to Mrs. Hubbard and talked to her about our plan and how it was developing. And we asked her for a proclamation to mark that occasion. And like I said in 17, our theme is a call to unity. Of course, we know that any society building such as Albany, either city government, county government, civic leader, business leaders, spiritual leaders, and the citizens. We take a stance to work with our citizens. Our vision is to get our citizens to do our part in this community. Our mission is to restore dignity, pride, and respect. We, we made mention to a group, May 15th, which the mayor attended and Mr. Carlton Fletcher, that what we set out to do is a citizen takeover of Dougherty County, Albany, Southwest Georgia, as we take on our state with this information. But it's a good takeover. You see, because we know and we've come to understand that what's missing in this whole equation is dignity, pride, and respect in our community. To get it back up to par, get it functioning as the other parts of our cities functioning, it can be done. We set out to do that. I just gave a clerk a proposal that we finally finalized, and the budget, itemized budget is soon to come. It should be finished within a few days. Because we believe and we understand how important it is for citizens and civic leaders to collaborate, and that's not happening. Religious leaders need to better collaborate with our county and city government. With that, I'm going to be brief because we know that you all recognize and should recognize these problems as well. They're problematic, and we can do a lot of bother with the citizen doing their part. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much. All right. Any other delegations to deny previously signed up and wish to be heard at this time? Motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I don't, Scott, I don't see the bids. I only see one person.
Just, where did Mr. Addison go?
He's over here with the mic.
I'm sorry. I can't see.
Page 13.
The information is on page 13.
I'm used to that grid. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Thank you. You ready for us to call the matter for a vote?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution declaring the listed equipment as surplus and authorized for disposal of sentence. The first listing of furniture and equipment damaged by water in the judicial building. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? They're being known. Call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation from the Finance Committee to amend the coroner's fiscal year 21 budget by $24,475. The amended budget will increase to $236,000, $6,211,531. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. Any discussion? They're being known. Call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution declaring a 2014 Ford F-250 for the Dougherty County Police Department as surplus and authorized for sales. The sale through underwriter safety and claims. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? They're being known. Call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation from the Finance Committee to amend the coroner's fiscal year 21 budget by $24,475. The amended budget will increase to $236,000, $6,211,531. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? They're being known. Call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation from the Finance Committee to fund the Albany State Youth Enrichment Program in the amount of $5,000 funding will be provided from the date fund. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Ms. Chairman.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just as an opportunity for us to help the youth.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. All right. Discussion's ended. Call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution providing for the acceptance and execution of the proposed management operations and maintenance agreement for the government center between Dougherty County and the City of Albany. Mr. Lee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody's familiar with the issue. I'll be glad to take any questions, but it's been all over the city and past. It's been on the agenda several times.
All right. Very good. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Did I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? They're being known. Call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners acceptance of the terms and conditions of the county's allocation of $17,084,422 to the American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Fund from the U.S. Treasury, which was signed by Finance Director Martha Henley on May 10th, 2021. Guidance related to the RFP funds have been provided by ACCG. Mr. Addison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. This is a recommendation from ACCG to ratify the signing of the, the acceptance of the money. It's not a requirement by the Treasury, but they recommend for, for record-keeping purposes that we go ahead and do this.
Can you repeat that a little bit louder, Ms. Addison? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yes. This is not a requirement from the U.S. Treasury. It's a recommendation from ACCG that we go ahead and do this for, for documentation purposes.
Understood. And, and I'm assuming this is a best practices suggestion coming from ACCG. And I will say this, just in the field that I work in right now, to see the number of PPP fraud cases that are being prosecuted by the U.S. Attorney's Office with the amount of money that is flowing after the COVID-19 pandemic, I think it's completely advisable for us to follow best practices in all means and manners possible and demonstrate our fiscal responsibility. So.
Question?
Yes. Commissioner Gaines?
Could you please send us how we're going to use this money, some notion of where it's going to go and how it's going to undergird our costs or budget or finances?
We're still working on, learning about the process and, and the ways that the county can utilize the funds. We're still getting training on that daily. And, you know, the rule is still an interim final rule and has not been finalized yet. So we, we plan to pull together an action plan for the commission and we will bring that back to you all for approval.
Yeah, I, I just noticed a sentence that says guidance related to the funds has been provided. So I'm, I'm just, you haven't had an opportunity to, to synthesize that guidance yet?
There are a lot of questions as a result of the guidance that, it's very complicated, the, the different allowances for spending. So there are a lot of questions out there that need to be clarified before we can formalize the plan. But we are working on it. Yes, ma'am.
Understood. So our, our, the, what we're accepting are terms and conditions that overall guide how we ultimately allocate the funds. I think, am I saying that correctly, Mr. Addison?
So we're, we're accepting the funds formally.
Sure. We're accepting the funds and we're also accepting the terms and the conditions associated with the funds, which are guiding principles. And I think what Commissioner Gaines is getting at is we are going to get that opportunity to see how we apply that, and we're going to have to approve that.
Yeah. How it undergirds local budgets. I mean, this is one of the really big fights that the nation had.
Sure.
About allocating these funds to local governments. But now that it has been allocated, you just need to understand how we're going to benefit.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this what I'm trying to get at?
I totally get that.
And because that sentence says that you already have the guidance, I thought perhaps we understood how it would undergird our budget or our finances. But we have to wait.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. And, and good, and good point. And I'll, I'll tell you this. I mean, it's been very confusing to me because I've seen the debate go back and forth about, I mean, at one point hearing some state senators say, or, you know, U.S. senators saying just let local governments bankrupt versus other. And so I don't know exactly what all came out in the wash, but I'm, I'm happy to learn.
Yeah. And we, we don't know how we can apply it, whether it's going to undergird our general fund significantly. We just sat through a, a presentation that talks about the impact of COVID on our insurance. And of course, I mean, it's impacted us in other ways.
Sure.
So is this going to be able to plug those holes?
Yes, ma'am.
That we experienced? And to what degree is the question?
I think it's a great question. Great question. Commissioner Jones?
I'll look forward to receiving that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Addison, is it, is it, we, we do have two years to, to determine that, right? What, how are we going to spend that? Is it, is it a two-year timeframe on that? Is my understanding?
Yes, sir. The money is, needs to be allocated by the end of '24, and all of it would have to be spent by the end of '26.
So that gives us time to, to formulate a plan. That's what I think you all are talking about, right?
Yes, sir. We have time.
Formulating this plan. So we got plenty, not plenty of time, but we have some time.
Well, I, I mean, to, to actually allocate it, but to understand how it can be used, I would imagine we want to do that relatively soon.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're actively working to. We're, we're actively working to, to, to understand the God.
Yeah, we don't want to wait six years to understand how we're gonna use the money.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Gaines, uh, what had, what has come out is that you can only capitalize, project-wise, you can only use it for water, sewer, and broadband for capital projects. Now, the other things that we do, yes, ma'am, are gonna be determined like we're talking about.
Yeah, but general fund activities.
Yeah.
Uh, there, there is money in there for, uh, normal budget activities, right? Am I correct?
You're correct. So that frees up more...
So that's what we need to understand.
Sure.
Okay, as soon as possible. Thanks.
Very good. All right, thank you. All good discussion. All right. I'm, I'm sorry. I'll consider a motion at this time. Motion and second. Any further discussion? There being none, call them out for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for approval of the county's Disaster Recovery Fund budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty in the amount of one million twenty thousand dollars. Funding is provided by the state and federal grants. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We recommend approval of, um, amending this, uh, this, uh, budget. It was, uh, we weren't sure in the beginning how much funding we needed to be allocated to budget this, so this is actual, accepting the budget to, to, uh, just, uh, setting the budget to spend.
All right, very good. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? There being none, call them out for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next, um, one second here. All right. Next presentation of the General Fund Budget Projections from Mr. Wall. One, Mr. Wall? You rob a stagecoach on the way over here?
Sir?
You rob a stagecoach on the way over here?
I, um, listening to you calling all the legislation, I thought you selling cows. You better add it than anybody ever saw. If I was a commissioner, I'd be scared to raise my hand. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I don't know, um, if I could get to the next slide. So, um, Martha Henley and Mr. McCoy and I just sort of put these assumptions together, and I'd just like to go over the assumptions real quick. For revenues, number one, COVID's gone by FY twenty-two, we're back to normal. Number two, property taxes are the same in FY twenty-two, increased two percent a year for twenty-three, twenty-four. Sales taxes are budgeted slightly lower for FY twenty-two and increased two percent per year in twenty-three and twenty-four. Other taxes are the same for FY twenty-two and two percent per year in twenty-three and twenty-four, and fines and forfeitures are budgeted at FY twenty-one levels, which, which reflect COVID, and, um, that's a conservative projection. Hopefully, if COVID is now gone, that's our assumption, the fines and forfeitures will go back to the twenty-nineteen level, and we'll show it to you in the numbers in just a minute. The expenses are increased in FY twenty-two due mainly to the health insurance increases. I saw a presentation that y'all got as soon as I came in the door, and, um, liability insurance is up by twenty percent as well. General government and public safety increases, two percent per year, that's inflation rate for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Other expenses are increased by fifty thousand per year in those out fiscal years, twenty-three and twenty-four, and there's no pay increases since twenty-nineteen, and we don't have any budgeted. So if I could go to the next page, next slide?
Can I ask a question now? Let me see if I understand the question, if we go back.
Ma'am?
Can I ask a question on your assumptions?
Yes, ma'am.
If we go back?
Can we go? Thank y'all very much.
Okay. Expenses going up, but property taxes remaining the same. How do you do that? How do you balance? Well, anyway, you'll show us.
Well, so fortunately, sales taxes have gone up, and so we've made the difference up in sales taxes. So, the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-one this year, when y'all adopted the budget, we used six million dollars of fund balance, if you remember to, to, to adopt it. Expenses came in less than budgeted, and sales tax revenues were pretty significantly higher. And so while property taxes aren't growing much, you have been able to make up the difference through the sales tax.
How, how do you explain that increase in sales tax? Is it better bookkeeping at the state level or, or, or collecting more at the state level, or just what is going on?
So, um, when we would do our quarterly reports, you've asked me before...
Right.
To try to go to the Department of Revenue, and I have, and, um, they won't tell you. It's the doggoneest thing I have ever seen. They, they produce a report that shows commodities and household goods and, but they don't show point of sale or point of source, and throughout all of Georgia, every client I got, when we went into COVID, we thought sales taxes would decline, and they did not. Everybody, everywhere across the state, have had dramatic increases in the sales tax revenues. And, um, only anecdotally is people buying off Amazon, they're still grocery shopping. It just, I can, I can't get the Department of Revenue to give me a concrete answer as to why it's the case.
Darn it, Steve.
No doubt. Next page. I just wanted to give you all the history. A lot of y'all have been here throughout this history. Some of the commissioners are new, um, but I just wanted you to see, look at the third line from the bottom, the ending fund balance. In twenty-twelve, it was eleven million, and then notice I, I show it by number of months in reserve, so that was three months, then it went to fourteen million, which is four months in reserve, sixteen million, which is right at five months of reserve, then it starts going down pretty dramatically. Fifteen million in, uh, fifteen, another fifteen million, and then twelve million in two thousand seventeen. Next slide, please. And then two thousand eighteen, it had fallen to ten million, right at two-point-three or two-point-five, five months. And then look at the very top line. Property taxes went from twenty-seven million to thirty-two million. And there was our property tax increase. And the first time in a long, long time, your employees received a pay raise. And, um, at the time we did that tax increase from twenty-seven million to thirty-two million eight, um, we had hoped that it would last for five years. I don't know if y'all remember that, but we'd hoped it would last for five years at the time. So, um, twenty's year one, twenty-one's two, twenty-two's three, twenty-three's four, and twenty-four's five. So, if you'll look at the twenty-twenty projected, you can see that, uh, we added six-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand to fund balance. In nineteen, we added two million eight. That was all the results of managing the expenses and raising the taxes. Look at twenty-one. We'd adopted a budget with a six-million-dollar expenditure to our fund balance, but we're gonna wind up maybe to the positive or slightly negative spending twenty-three thousand. For me, as y'all's financial advisor, going into COVID where we didn't know where bottom was, these results are astounding.
Yeah.
I'm so pleased by it. So let's go to the twenty-one projected budget. That's what I'm here for, and I, I bumped my gum down for fifteen minutes, Mr. Chairman. I'm finally getting to it. So, twenty-one revenues are projected at fifty million five hundred thousand. The twenty-two would be the projected budget. Uh, twenty-two projected budget, the revenues are forty-nine million four. If you'll look just to the left, the twenty-one projected revenues are fifty million five. So you can see that staff is being very conservative and projecting revenues slightly less in twenty-two than they were in twenty-one. Now, if you all wanted to adopt a budget that's different than conservative and aggressive, we could increase revenues, but I don't like doing that, and you all have never done that in the past. You've always been conservative on your revenue projections and conservative on your expenses. Look down at the bottom. The expenses in twenty-two are budgeted at fifty-five million eight-eighty, yet in twenty-one, we only spent fifty million five hundred and twenty-three thousand. Now, I know for a fact going in, you're gonna have this million and change increase in your health insurance and twenty percent increase in your liability. The rest of it are projected increases that might or might not occur. Historically, they haven't, but they're budgeted in there. And so your twenty-two budget is a lot like twenty-one, in that we're asking you to budget six-and-a-half million dollars of fund balance, uh, knowing that you probably won't spend that amount. You're fortunate that you've got this fund balance, you've worked hard over the time to put that money aside so that you have this ability. You know, Georgia law makes you do a balanced budget, the federal government doesn't. You know, they come up with this deficit budget all the time, but you can't do that. And so if you didn't have that fund balance, we'd either have to come up with wildly aggressive, uh, projections, or, or you'd have to cut your budget dramatically. And then I wanna go to twenty-three and twenty-four. If you look down at the bottom of twenty-two, um, um, the projection, if we spent all of that fund balance, would be one-point-five, four months of reserve. If you look just to the left, in twenty-one, the actual, uh, reserve is gonna be about three-point-two, four months. You all don't have a policy of what your reserve needs to be, and, um, um, like, the metropolitan Atlanta counties like to always have two months. Some of the smaller jurisdictions like to have, uh, six months. And so you all have always tried to stay somewhere between three and, and you see six months. And, um, so my, my goal for you is if you fall below two months, then we need to have a tax increase or need to cut the budget. I'd like to see you do it at two months. And the reason why is if you have about two or three months, you can avoid doing a tax anticipation note every year, a tan, and a tan does cost you money. And so you receive most of your property tax collections in the fall of the year, so that fund balance keeps your cash flowing until the property taxes come in. And then in twenty-three, in twenty-four, you can see down here that the budgets are projecting the same expenditure to our fund balance. I, I wanna just talk for a minute about the things that, that you all could take comfort in, that you might not spend that much fund balance. Look at fines and forfeitures, Commissioner Jones. I talked to you about it before. In two thousand and nineteen, before COVID hit, fines and forfeitures were seven-hundred-and-one-thousand. And then in twenty, there were seven-hundred-and-nine-thousand. Twenty-one projected, it fell by almost half, four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand. The budget only has four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand in fines and forfeitures. I think it's gonna get back to seven-hundred-thousand. Courts are back open, jury trials are going. I just think that it'll go back to that, but we didn't budget that, so that's three-hundred-thousand right there. Charges for services is another, uh, broad category. In pre-COVID, it was eight million two-twenty-nine. In twenty-one, this last year, it's only six million nine-sixty. Charges for services mainly is, uh, all kind of court fees. Courts weren't open, so you couldn't get the, that money. So we've budgeted actually less in twenty-two, six million four-eighteen, but in actuality, if COVID's gone, it's gonna go back to that eight-point-two-million-dollar figure. And then lastly, um, Commissioner Gaines brought up a great point about the, in my industry, we call it Biden bucks, the American Rescue Plan, but we call it Biden bucks. There are four main categories you can spend it for, and I heard you, Commissioner Johnson, talk about the cattle projects, or water, sewer, and broadband. And then the other three categories are helping businesses with COVID, helping frontline workers with extra pay, or reimbursing yourself for lost revenues. So me and my business, all my clients say, I'd really like to use a portion of that to put money back in my general fund. So the problem with that is the Treasury came out with a summary of the bill, then they came out a couple of months later with actual, uh, regs for how that works. The regs for how you reimburse yourself, it says you take your counterfactual revenue. What in the world is that? I'm from Millisville. I don't even know what in the world that means. And so then it's got a formula in there. The formula, I'm telling you, Einstein had a hard time trying to figure it out. So all these experts, lawyers in Washington, D.C., lobbyists, uh, ACCG, Georgia Municipal Association, my industry group, they've had all these webinars, and I heard you talking about all the things that y'all listen to daily. If you look at your revenues, your fines and forfeitures, that category is down. Charges for services, that category is down. But if you look at the total, the total is down a little bit, but not by as much. I project that if you could do it category by category, you could take two-and-a-half million of the Biden bucks and put it back in your general fund. But it seems that the Treasury in their publication of their regs want you to take it as a whole entity.
Oh.
And not by category. But that's not clear yet. Some folks say one way, some folks say another way. So that's why in your budget, Martha and I and Mr. McCoy and, um, Scott, we didn't budget Biden bucks because we're not sure how much we can get. But suffice it to say, you'll get some. I mean, the revenues in twenty-nineteen is total was fifty-one million six, and in twenty-one, we're projected fifty, fifty million five. And remember, you can do it by calendar year, I mean, by, by your fiscal year too. Your base year is the fiscal year that ended before COVID hit, and then each fiscal year thereafter until twenty-twenty-four, any revenue that you were less in your twenty-nineteen case, we could put money back in the general fund. But we've gotta work through those regs and make sure we're calculating it right.
So, it's a possibility we can use it, uh, to support our general budget going back and forward.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's, the question is whether we can do it by line item or by, um, bottom line.
Correct.
And we don't know the answer to that.
So, uh, ACCG says in their webinar, it's the entity as a whole. Some of the lawyers in D.C. advising, uh, DeKalb, College Park, Clayton County, they say it's category by category. Until we can be absolutely sure, we won't bring you a plan. So it's, you know, it's...
So the money we're getting, the seventeen million or whatever it is we're getting, will just lie there for a while?
So, so it's eight million, you know, we got eight million and change, and then eight, it, it comes in two tranches. So we've already got one, then the other one's a year from now. Correct, it'll sit in the interest-bearing account. Segregated, we'll segregate it, won't we, Martha? And a whole different segregated account.
Okay.
Let it earn interest, and, I mean, we'll come to you as quick as we can with a plan. It's just that, um, have you ever in your career seen lawyers have different opinions?
That's why I say one lawyer in town does well, two lawyers in town they get rich.
It's wrong.
Yeah, you know, what is, what is really, um, just looking at these bottom-line numbers, Mr. Wall, I cannot fathom why we would go from total expenditures projected for twenty-twenty-one at fifty million up to fifty-five in one giant beat. Nothing in our history shows that we do that kind of thing.
We never have. You're right.
So, I mean, I'm just looking at it and saying, jeez, and I know I need to go back and look a little bit more in depth at these, uh, line items, but that bottom line just really scares the heck out of me.
So, um, how much was the premium for the health insurance? Million-two or million-eight? So I know from fifty to fifty-two million guaranteed, and I know twenty percent increase in liability insurance. How much was that? So two hundred thousand. The rest of it might not happen, but it's budgeted in there in cost of inflation, uh, as each department met. Somehow or another, since I've been representing since twenty-eighteen, and then it goes all the way back to twenty-twelve, y'all have a, a culture here at Dougherty that you budget super-conservative. I don't, I don't know where it was instituted... I don't, I don't know where it was instituted.
Yeah, but looking at our history, Mr. Wall, going back to 2018, we haven't seen that kind of rise. I just don't remember that kind of.
Well, so we did like, for instance, the budget in 21, I think the budget was projected at about 50 some odd million dollars. And we came in a whole lot less. So the, the reason in 21, we didn't spend 6 million was a combination, the expenses came in less and the revenues came in more. But it wasn't all revenues. And, and there's just a conservative culture here about your budgeting that goes way back. Maybe it was Lamar Hudgens, Martha inherited it, I've now inherited it, that, that you budget low revenues and high expenses and you're, you're always surprised to the good. And I, and I don't mean to say it's, you know, a budget's not, you, you can be sure that a budget ain't right. It's going to be either up or down, you know, it's somebody's estimate.
Well, we're obviously not being conservative in our projected expenditures for 2022 because we jump up by a greater than five point something million dollars.
Well, and.
Yeah, but over 2.2 million dollars is fixed cost.
Insurance.
That you can't help.
Yeah.
And.
The rest of it can be.
Probably under no circumstance would the, the rescue plan pay for that, huh?
It may, but we've still got a budget without knowing whether we're getting a penny, even though we know we've gotten 16, 17 million.
We may end up having to pass amendments as, as additional guidance comes through on the ARP.
Definitely.
Which is a good point, Commissioner Gaines, Commissioner Gray is, we still have to proceed forward irrespective of whether or not those funds will be payable to those sort of line items or not. And I suspect we're going to be making sausage out of this thing for a while.
One thing, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you again, Mr. Wall. When we had our retreat, I guess I'm sort of surprised, I thought when we talked about had the different employee options that was given us with the presentation, I guess as well as to even down to the finance committee, I really thought we don't bring one of those, one of those options back to the table.
So I'll talk about that. So at the retreat, I gave you all this sheet of paper and down at the bottom in expenses, I had pay study implementation. And the number was 1.9 million dollars for FY22. And we had to take it out completely. And the hope is that you can utilize some combination of your own money and Biden bucks, the ARP money, to implement some portion of the pay study in FY22. It'll be brought back to you as a budget amendment. But because the budget was so tight, it wasn't brought to you as part of this budget.
Yeah, I just think we'll be, because of the demand of the citizens, to me, when I look at public works, I look at our county police, I look at our recreation, to me, it's something that you really can't overlook. Because of the demand is so high from the public, even down to, one of our conversations about, just taking it as a metaphor, talking to the commissioner now, we're lit upon. I mean, we're talking about putting monitors, but we need policemen. We're talking about public works, which to me is the backbone of a county. We talk about overgrown property, we talk about dilapidated houses. When I know my public work department has probably opening for at least eight to nine people, as well as my county police, and not helping us at all with the media, with youth crimes, crimes period, I don't see how we can just lead that out. That, that just is important to me because look like, even though we've been conservative in the past, we get our revenue from people. So I don't see why I can hold some of that money back as well as I know I have. And it's not like 650 employees taking their money and going out of town. The money still stays here. So I guess again, I don't know, I'm just talking to my chairman of the, the finance committee, I don't see how you can just totally exempt that, not having any conversation about that.
So if I could just answer the questions, okay. Mr. McCoy, Ms. Henley, Mr. Addison and I have had numerous conversations. And at the last finance committee, I think you were there, Commissioner Gray, and you were there, Commissioner Newsom, pay increases, particularly for your frontline employees, is a priority of staff and a priority of y'all as a commission. And part of that 1.9 million dollar pay study, implementation of pay study, was for frontline workers. And so staff and presenting the budget to the finance committee and now presented to you, we simply couldn't afford, right in the midst of the uncertainty of COVID, to take that big a chunk without bringing you a tax increase as well. And probably a tax increase is not the right thing to do in the midst of COVID. It might be okay in 23, it might be okay in 24 to implement this. So one of the things that Mr. McCoy has tasked staff to do with the 16, 17 million dollars you got coming in from Biden bucks.
Figure out how to make it work.
Is how to utilize some of that money to help pay frontline workers. And then the pay increase, the pay study, might happen in 23 and 24, once we settled out from COVID.
Even if it's not a direct line item, and, and, and I'm going to jump in here for a second, because what I suspect is, we're going to be twisting some spaghetti noodles. In other words, it may not be that the Biden bucks are permissible to utilize in order to fund pay raises, which is, I would suspect that that is a potential, usually a lot of times, federal dollars come down a certain way, they have certain strings. However, they may plug other holes, which can then open up other pockets in order to be able to achieve this. And I can appreciate.
So the cabs use it to make bonus payments. Every employee gets $3,000 out of the cab. Now, my, Mr. McCoy's asked me about that first, is it legal? I also represent the cab, but did nobody in the cab ask me?
Right.
Not surprising.
But, but the cab is paying bonuses. So it's not a salary increase that once Biden bucks gone, you have to pick it up. It's a one-time.
But the cab also gotten itself into some trouble a while back here recently too.
Well, it was Stonecrest, a city in the cab.
Ah, that's right.
But it wasn't the cab.
But we, we paid at the end of the year. I don't know whether we call them bonuses.
No, you don't call them a bonus.
But I mean, what you call it is.
Something like that. I forget, we call it.
That was PPP.
It's something you're familiar with.
Yeah, we, we, we do the same thing. I mean, it's, it's the same thing.
But the question is, are, can Biden bucks be used for that? Is it in a state law question?
Well, I think the chairman was saying that, you know, you, probably not. You just simply plug a hole somewhere else.
Right.
And that money gets freed up to be used to, to, to do that.
And, and part of the plan, Commissioner Edwards, is Mr. McCoy has staff along with himself working to bring you a plan to pay frontline workers, whether it's a combination of Biden bucks or your money. But a, a big pay increase, like we talked about at the retreat, 1.9 million, we just didn't have the room in this year's budget to do it.
Without having to provisionally, without having to go ahead and raise taxes.
That's the only way you can do it.
And, and we still, in other words, we still haven't figured out how we can spend all of this piggy bank. And we're not sure whether or not we can direct spend from that piggy bank on our, on our employees or not, or whether or not that piggy bank can pay back our other piggy banks so that those piggy banks can pay for our employees.
And to give you an example, when we met with your finance committee, that morning, I told you, we would take two and a half million of Biden bucks and utilize some of that money to try to implement some of the pay study, if you remember that. But just as quick as I left, that day ACCG had a webinar and said it's entity-wide and not category by category. And so we're still trying to get the facts about that. But, but remember, we talked about using a combination of Biden bucks and your own money by plugging a hole, is the chairman's talking about.
Yeah, we just have to remember that it is a direct correlation between salary increases on a whole, across the board, and tax increases.
Yes.
There's a direct correlation, period.
Yes.
But I think.
Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Jones.
Uh, Mr. Wall, the increases between 21 and 22 by, by line item from general government or judicial, public safety, public works, isn't that increase all related to insurance?
Some of it is, most of it, so if you look down between 21 and 22, the totals is 50 million to 55 million. And two and a half million is insurance. The rest of it would be inflationary pressures on this or that line item.
Public safety going up, some of that is insurance for that department.
Yes, sir. So, so that two and a half million is split among all those departments.
Thank you.
Yes. It's allocated by employees.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, Thomas Paine wrote a book called Common Sense a while back, and I think that's what we need to use in this particular instance here. I mean, we can sit here and talk, but the only money that you can count on is that in your pocket. And I think the best thing the staff is doing, I think the best thing that you all are doing, Mr. Walls, is to taking your time and finding out what this Biden money is for because of the fact that you can jump out here and then you have to give it back. I'm looking and I'm talking to a lot of my friends in these small counties who took advantage of this money. And then now they, you know, they're getting ready to go before 12 in the box because they misuse money and they don't have everything to match up with what they said they had. So my suggestion is to just use this common sense, let staff vet it. And then when staff bring us, when, when staff bring us a prop, a, a product, we know that we're going to be able to use it. And, and it's better the way, you don't have to rush into anything. But we need to wait and make sure they vet it good. And then one thing about it, once we get that money, then I know that we can give it to staff or whoever we're going to give it to and not have to wonder about what's going to happen later, whether, whether we're going to have to give it back. And, and we know we don't have any money to give back. Once they give it to us, we gotta, I mean, it's there. We don't have any extra. So that's what I, that's my suggestion from listening to all the, all the, all the human and heart.
Commissioner Newsom?
Well, this is, as we know, being on the finance committee, this has been one of our major concerns. And, and it's, it's been one of those years where we, we, we're going to get this pot of money and we're not sure where we can spend it. So I promise you, I think, without any degree of, we're going to get a plan that's going to solve the problem, or at least address this problem for this year and be able to fund it. That there's not a commissioner up here that doesn't want to give a pay raise to our people. I can promise you that.
Sure.
And I'm included in that.
Yes, sir.
A well-deserved pay raise. And we're fortunate enough, at least now, at least we've got an idea that we do have a pot of money sitting there that's probably going to be able to do that. Now, what form it comes in, we don't know yet. It could be a lump sum, it could be, but I don't think that we can use it for salary increases as a line item. Is that correct?
I believe that to be the case.
Right. So it's going to have to come in some other form, but rest assured, it is coming.
Understood. I think that's all very good. I, I thank all of our commissioners for this discussion. I thank Commissioner Edwards for reminding us of, of what our priorities were and, and thank the finance committee and all of our commissioners for keeping that, that goal in, in, in the, at the horizon and, and as our north star. I think that's very good. I also think it's very good that we're approaching this in a very methodical fashion. Mr. Wall, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion of the fiscal year 2022 budget request by Coroner Michael Fowler. Good morning, Mr. Fowler, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to respectfully request.
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Oh, hold on. I'll go ahead and let Mr. Fowler go and then we'll, we'll go ahead and, and go with Mr. Newsom and Ms. Henley. Go ahead, Mr. Fowler.
I would like to respectfully request that you consider the following line items in the budget for amendments, the coroner's office. The amendment is to ensure that I stay within budget in fiscal year 22. Also, it is to prevent me from coming back before you to request more money for my office. I will show you these and the discussion as I move forward, amending the request for the coroner's office 2022. Finance committee recommends zero dollars for travel. The coroner's office requested $3,000. Travel is needed for the deputy coroners as they travel to get their CEUs a continued education every year. Travel includes mileage, food, hotel if needed. And they have, the deputy coroners are paid 175 per day being away from home for training. Travel also includes the coroner going to the Georgia Coroner's Association meeting twice a year. That meeting is important to provide information regarding the opportunities that would benefit the Dora County Coroner's Office for its training, grants, and other opportunities. I will welcome your suggestion, what you recommend, my commissioner, my chairman, for its travel. This would, this money was used, would be used for, have been used for ever since I've been in office, but finance committee said they recommend zero. I just need, what you recommend?
Mr. Fowler, what, this budget amendment was only for the remainder of this year, your request for a budget increase for this current fiscal year, not, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this removal of travel expenses in your budget does not.
It's not.
Effect your 2022 fiscal year budget.
Okay.
You have a lump sum budget to prioritize under your entire department.
Okay.
So this is only for.
That's a good clarification.
You've only, you've overspent this year's budget. You requested a budget increase, an amendment in this year's budget that was denied. And in that, what, what was covered, they did remove the travel out of there because we're July is the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, well, Mr. McCoy told me that I will completely discuss.
Commissioner Gray, if I may interrupt, this is a result of the finance committee's recommendation to decrease the coroner's budget in next fiscal year.
Right.
It's currently, per the recent amendment, 236,006. Prior to that, it was 211,531 dollars to 185,000 dollars in next fiscal year.
Right.
And as a result of that reduction, some of the line items were reduced.
Right, but the budget committee did not get into the line item amendments.
Travel was taken out the zero for, posed for next fiscal year.
So that one, Mr. McCoy told me concerning the year coming up, 2022.
Understood. Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Gaines?
So this is, is it or is it not the line items for next year, for 2022?
The, the budget committee was not presented with line items of the coroner's budget. It was just a, a total amount.
Right. And so this was, travel was reduced, we did not reduce salaries.
That was staff's decision based on the total amount that was approved by, recommended by the budget committee.
The, the line items and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe this will provide us some clarity. The line items in any particular department head's budget are generally speaking advisory. They don't have to be followed very, they don't have to be followed.
If a line item needs to be adjusted, a department head can request that money be transferred from another line item that is under budget. So funds could be reallocated to that specific line item. So for the coroner, if, if, if he would like to do some travel, he could request that. One of his other line items that is, currently has funding, that could be reallocated to there. And generally, county administrator would review that and approve it because it's not an increase or decrease.
It doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me, Mr. Chair. Perhaps I don't understand.
Sure.
And that probably could be a real case, but why don't you zero out a travel item that is, is perfunctory?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know, I'm.
And then say, well, if you, if you got to travel, then go get it from somewhere else. That seems to be what, what they've done.
Well, I think, I think what we ought to do is, is hear Mr. Fowler out and then we'll go through the, the budget, the fiscal year 2020 budget, and probably address those items there. So we can address those specific questions. I think it's good to, and part of my thinking was to go ahead and let Mr. Fowler speak so we could highlight those.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay. Going to the next page. Finance recommends zero dollars for us. Normally, when I go to the association meeting, some good books for my deputy coroners to increase their knowledge. Sometime I usually pick up a book out of my own pocket. But trying to show the citizen of Dora County where their money is going, I think it's a good thing to do sometime to pick up a good book at a convention. And I had set aside $50 going into 2022 for the coroner budget, but I still probably buy books out of my own pocket to help my deputy coroners also internship to learn from that. But they zero it at out of two. That's another zero. Next page, the morgue trip. I want the morgue trips to apply to my deputy coroners only. Deputy coroner will release bodies from the morgue if I'm not available to go to the morgue. They took that completely out of the budget coming in 2022. My suggestion, we normally. My suggestion, we normally pay since 2017, since Mr. Rich, uh, Richard Crowder set that up. We were paying 75 dollars for them to go to the morgue and release bodies to the GBR sometime 2:30 in the morning, sometime 4:30 in the morning. Um, so I'm asking what your recommendation for us releasing bodies? If you don't agree with that fee that was set up back then, what you suggest to pay the deputy coroners when I'm not available to go to the morgue? But most of them got jobs. So I'm going to have to get them up, ask them to leave that bed, especially if I'm out working a case. If I've worked 17 or 18 hours all day long and, and I ask them to go out and release a body. What you, Commissioner, recommend? Okay, you want to keep going, continue on? Okay. Morgue cleanup. We'll go to the next page. Finance recommend, they took that line item completely out of the, uh, budget for 2022. Coroner's office request, if, if this line item is taken out, I would like to know what is the commissioner's recommendation to clean the morgue? Will the county workers clean the morgue at Phoebe Putney Hospital North, where in knowledge of dealing with biohazard waste is needed? I welcome your suggestion on that too, uh, for its cleaning the morgue. We set up with Phoebe Putney, then charged 250 to clean the morgue when we need it. I asked them to come clean the morgue. So I just let them know when to clean it and they charged that to us. So if we take that line item out, I'd like to know who, is the county workers going to clean the morgue or who? That's why I'm, I, I like, I welcome your suggestion. Moving on to the next page. Deputy coroner compensation. Finance committee recommend 12,924 dollars for 24, uh, 22 fiscal year. The coroner's office recommends 16,800. Really should be 20,000. I'm going to show you and you look at the, um, line item. The deputy coroners are paid 175 a case. If you divide 12,924 dollars by 70, 175 dollars, it results in 74 cases a year. You look at the other side, 2018, the deputy coroner did 115 calls times 75, that's 20,000 dollars. 2019, they did 88 calls, se- times 75, that's 15,400. 2020, they did 115 calls, times 75, that's 20,125 dollars. 21, 2021, as of today, they have done 62 calls times 75, 175, that's 1,850 dollars. So 12,924 dollars a year is not going to suffice the, the coroner's office guy. We have to come back again and ask for more money. Right now, we 31 cases ahead. Uh, normal pace right now. We're ahead. You go to the next page. This is how we break it down a little bit. My deputy coroners, they did 115 cases. I did 256 cases. My deputy coroner in 2019 did 88 cases. I did 302 cases, a total of 309 cases. 2020, my deputy coroner did 115 cases. I did 383 calls. Total of 498 calls. I did 78% of the calls. Really, I do 100% of the calls because all, all phone calls come to my, this is my county phone. All calls come to my phone, county phone. All my deputy coroners have full-time jobs. Only time they able to work sometime is in the evening and sometime on weekend. Sometime when they go out, I still have to go out and make sure they be trained properly. There's no other coroner in Georgia run 386, 83 calls a year. There's not another coroner in Georgia. I run 300, I ran 386 calls, but I look at every call that come through from my deputy coroner because during the daytime when we get our medical records, police reports, information going to the crime lab, mostly nine through five, my deputy coroners are working. I handle all their medical records. I have to go through each medical record from all the hospitals, the doctors, to determine why this person is deceased. My deputy coroners are not able to do that because I don't have a full-time deputy, so I have to do that. So I see every case that come through the coroner's office. Going to the next page, transportation. Finance recommend 10,000 dollars, looking at the, uh, sheet that Mr. McCarr sent me. The coroner's office recommending 30,000. It should be a little bit more. Last year, we spent 36,000 dollars in transportation. Death is not predictable. You can't determine when a person is going to die, how many people is going to die. Bodies are being transported to the GBR crime lab and they return back to the place of origin. EMS transports bodies many times from Phoebe North, I mean, Phoebe Maine Hospital to Phoebe North. We actually spent 43,460 dollars and 39 cents for 2021 fiscal year. We've spent that. So there's no way 10,000 going to be enough. Uh, we have to come back, ask for more money if this line item don't be changed. Going to the transportation two, second page. As they said, 10,000 dollars and I see a saying 30, maybe possible more. Three weeks ago, we had four bodies that was transported to the GBR crime lab for an autopsy in one, in one day. The cost was 550 dollars per case, a total of 2020 dollars in one day. If we had just only 20 cases a year, 20 times 550, it results in 11,000 dollars. That's automatically more than 10,000. Bodies are being transported to the GBR crime lab. The homicide, suicide, drug overdose, uh, some natural death automatically go, child death automatically go. 2020, 14, 2013 to 14, we spent 11,750 dollars for transportation. 2014 to 15, we spent 16,750 dollars. 2021, again, again, said we had 43,460 dollars and 39 cents. Right now, I have three bodies in the crime, in the, in the morgue right now. One had to go this morning. That's 550 dollars. I got one going Tuesday and I got one going Wednesday. And this is Monday. I don't know how many more cases we're going to get the rest of the week. This is a breakdown of what we do at GBR lab. This is not the bodies that are being transported by the EMS. 2016, we transported, I mean, we had 11 suicide, 17 homicide, eight overdose. That's 36 times 550, that's 19,000 dollars. 17, we have nine suicide, 23 homicide. Drug, accident drug overdose is 17, that's 49, times that you see 26,000. 2018, we had seven suicide, 17 homicide, eight overdose. That's 32, 17,000 dollars. I'm just going to jump to, uh, 2020. We had 11 suicides, 21 homicides, 19 overdose. That comes to 51. 51 times 550 is 2, 28,000 dollars. We see that 10,000 dollars will not be enough. As of today, from January to today's date, we have pending 55 cases, autopsy and pending tox, 55 cases that go into the crime lab. That's five, 55 times 550 is 30,000 dollars. None of that money is going out of our pocket. None of that is for salary or anything like that. Those are cases that for transportation that have to be done. There's no if it is but about. There are cases that the GB, that, that, uh, the police officer, DCP, families be in, be pushing me to do an autopsy. I be going, I, I, like pulling teeth and tongue. I be trying to get them not, this, this is a case I don't think need to go to the crime lab. Sometime I've drawn blood. There's no other coroner do that. GBR allow me to draw the blood and send that in sometime to save costs. I've saved the kind of hundreds of dollars in the last few years by just drawing blood and sending it in, not sending the case in. But a lot of time, the law enforcement and families want me to get an autopsy done. And sometime they get upset with me because I don't send it in. But I be trying to look out for the budget on my office, but sometime I just, I don't have no choice but to send the, uh, the case to the crime lab. So 10,000 dollars again, Commissioner, I, I welcome your suggestion, what you suggest. I've shown you that 43,000 dollars you've spent, 28,000, 10,000 dollars in 2020 is not going to be feasible. Again, I welcome your suggestion. The next slide, health insurance. I have one employee, only one full-time employee. 2020, 2021, on this line item, it was 7,000 dollars budget for this line item, for the health insurance. Going into 2022, I just want clarity, understanding, because I don't understand it. It jumped 20,000 dollars, 20,000 to 620 dollars. I don't know this was a mistake. But from 7,000 to 20,620 on this line item, that 13,620 dollars is going to be coming out from the operating expense of my office now going into insurance. Like, my, my budget should have went up, my, uh, for its company and for its resource because 20, 13,620 dollars going into insurance is taken away from my operating expense. Uh, again, I welcome you, clarity on that, the health insurance. Maybe someone can help me with that because it's 7,000, 2020, 2021, going into 2020, it's 20,620 dollars difference. My last request. I would like to have a full-time deputy. There are other kind of deaths on salary, not on call, based on salary call. I was able to get Columbus, Macon, Augusta versus Auburn. Columbus, Georgia have a full-time coroner, have three full-time deputies. And they benefit annually sick leave, medical retirement. All of them have cars, they have clothes and allowance, cell phone, gas. They do 1,050 calls a year. Macon have a full-time coroner, two full-time deputies and a contract, uh, uh, deputy. They have annually sick leave, medical, retirement, 300 dollars a month for using their personal cars, but they don't have the county car and they have a cell phone. They do 1,200 calls a year. Augusta, full-time coroner plus four full-time deputies and two part-time deputies. So that's seven people working 1,000, they have 1,000 cases a year. All of them have sick leave, annual leave, medical retirement, cars, cell phone. Dord County, Auburn and Georgia. I have no full-time deputies. I spoke two or three weeks ago. I am wearing myself out. I love what I'm doing. Mentally and physically is taking a toll on me. My deputy coroner, all of them have full-time jobs and some of them have a little, another part-time job. And I have to use them when I can use them. If they don't go, I have to respond. EMS, the fire department, the police, all of them waiting on me to get there. They have no benefits. If I put them on call, tell you, tell them I need them on call Saturday or Sunday and they don't get no calls, but they had to stay at home around the phone, don't get no call, they don't get paid anything. So what I had to do is compare Augusta. They did 1,000 calls. We did about 500 calls. I'm not asking for, for, for time. So if we need, we want to compare apples to apples. So I ought to, I'm requesting, I'd love to have at least one full-time deputy. Augusta got four full-time and two part-time. I have no full-time, really no part-time because mine is like contract when I, when I can get them when they can. They don't have no benefits. When, during the COVID-19, I tried to run most of those cases myself. If a deputy coroner went in a house and caught COVID, they have no workman's comp. They have no benefits. They carry this disease to their home, community disease, anything can happen to them. So I'm trying to say, I think that we need to consider our deputy coroner because, and then again, the police chief, the fire chief, uh, EMS. I have no backup guarantee. And my deputy coroner say they going out of town or what they want to do, I got to stay here. I got to cover the clock. I know that's what my job. I, I volunteer to do that and I love what I do. But I think, and I'd love for you to consider me as being a coroner trying to help Dord County. Maybe consider I may need a part-time, uh, deputy coroner. So I'd like for you to consider that. So compared, I can't compare myself with kindness that on the fee schedule. But I compare myself with a kind of that's on salary as our office is. Again, I thank you for your time. I thank you for listening to me. And I hope that we come some consideration on what we're doing.
Mr.?
Yes, Commissioner Gaines?
Uh, what is the total of this request?
I didn't get a total because, I mean, they gave me this, uh, I got this Friday, but I went back through it.
I mean, how much more does this add up to? I, I mean, I see the line item increases, but considering all of your requests, how much money are we talking about?
147,550 dollars.
In addition to what?
No, that's just what, if you take his salary plus the 3,000 dollar travel, plus 50 dollars in books, plus 2,700 dollars for more cleaning, plus 16,800 dollars under the deputy coroner compensation, 30,000 dollars under, uh, transport one, 30,000 dollars under transport two, that's 147,000.
Just one transport.
Okay.
I just using a different frame.
Oh, okay. Well, then you subtract 30,000 and you've got, uh, 117,550 dollars, which is essentially what your operational budget is and we're offering you 185,000 dollars to run your department.
And he's, he's, but he's also asking for, are you asking for full-time deputies?
Right. We give him 185,000.
But then 185,000 is my salary and all that and that, so that's.
No, no, 185,000 dollars includes your salary. That's 65,000 dollars for your salary.
I understand that. That's what I was saying. I understand that part. But I'm trying to say, when you add all it up together, 185, it's not going to be sufficient. And it's not for me, like I said. It's for the citizen of Dord County because if someone loved one.
I know, I know. But the last, I mean, when we looked at the, the historic record of the coroner's department budget in the budget committee, the last four years, you have exceeded your budget and we've made budget amendments to cover the overage. And you have gotten an increased budget the next fiscal year, which you've exceeded. That is a trend that I think is the only department in the county that shows that type of trend. And I understand 2020 was a, a completely different year for costs and, uh, activity within the coroner's department. But, I mean, step back, take the passion out of it, just look at the numbers. Um, you know, we provide a budget. Your line items and how you move them around under your department are between you and staff. You've got a budget.
Well, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I can't dictate that. I don't know how many drug death on my half. I don't know how many homicides.
I understand it's predictable.
He seems to be completely re-envisioning the coroner's function. It seems to me.
I'm trying to say, I'm not, I'm not using the money. How else I'm using the money? I'm showing you with every penny that I'm using for the coroner's office.
Let me bring a, bring a little clarity to that, uh, 185, 185,000 dollars, how that was derived at? We took a look at three counties. We looked at about 50 counties in Georgia, studied their coroner's budgets and talking to coroners and stuff like that. We picked three counties, all larger than, uh, than Dord County. We picked Valdosta Lounge. We picked Glenn County, which is Brunswick area, and we picked Floyd County. Valdosta and Floyd County have about 20,000 more people in them. We took and averaged the coroner's budget for those, um, for those three counties, which are very similar, even on the higher side for the, uh, the higher side for the population. And we averaged those three. And then we came up with averaging those three with larger counties. It typically came out about 175,000 dollars if you average those. So we thought a fair budget was 185,000. It gave you 10,000 dollars more than what those counties are actually spending. So that's how we derived it to 185.
Commissioner, Chairman. I don't know how many drug death. I don't, I don't know how many overdose. I don't know how many suicide those kind of have, but Dord County, I know for overdose, I know it's high. I know it's high. For homicide, it's high compared to problem, most of those county, and most of those county that you probably compared it was on fee schedule. But like I said, I'd like for y'all to decide, because if I got three bodies that go to crime level, I don't have any money, y'all help me to understand what to do with it.
Mr. Fowler, your budget is a hundred and eighty-five thousand. If Commissioner Gray's numbers are right, that these numbers is a hundred and seventeen thousand, and plus your salary, I mean, you still come in at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars left over, and you're still three thousand dollars above what you're asking for. So I don't, I'm confused.
You're saying?
If this budget that you're asking for here told us to a hundred and.
Just not the total, I was just picking out the line items that was on here.
Right, this is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
That's in addition.
So you're asking for an additional one hundred and seventeen thousand?
No, he's saying those figures that he quoted in here for those particular line items.
It would be a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar difference between what those line items were projected by the finance committee versus what he's asking for.
The finance committee did not do line items. That is a departmental decision, and if it, I'll state this on record. We don't give Larry an amount he can spend on every line item in his budget.
So we're not comparing apples to apples. And that was part of the reason why I wanted to go ahead and receive this information first, and then address those issues secondarily as we go through the budget recommendation. Because I know the finance committee did a lot of hard work on this, and I can appreciate. So sort of what we're, I think what we're addressing is the frustration that's associated with Mr. Fowler's interpretation that, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, that the finance committee's overall recommendation for a certain amount, that that means that certain money is being pulled from certain line items, and that's not actually the case, and that's something we'll further explore in our discussions here with the finance committee as we get the recommendation for the budget. So I think, obviously, this is a deliberative process. Mr. Fowler, thank you for your professional presentation.
Mr. Chairman, he's saying that it is inadequate, totally inadequate for what he is doing. That's what he's saying, bottom line.
Well, there's also been no effort within the department to manage costs and come up with cost-effective solutions.
Well, I just want to, I want to actually hear the information. I want to hear from the finance committee and hear their thought process. I understand what you're saying, Christian Gaines. Mr. Fowler is saying that it's inadequate. I hear, I hear what he's saying, I appreciate his presentation.
That's why it's inadequate.
Well, I think that's what his presentation was. I want to now hear from the finance committee and have the overall view that they had, because I know that they've put in a lot of hard work on this issue. And let's move on to the next item, thank you.
I guess, I'm going away this morning thinking, what though, what are we? Because three of the items that I know the coroner mentioned, you cannot move. But also something I've been noticing on the state website, a lot of counties have gone to contracting their transportation services out for deceased bodies. And I don't know if that will control that, so I don't. Then the cleaning, that's kind of, you gotta have cleaning. It ain't no way around that. So I don't know what you, I guess.
My point is.
Where you going with it, that's kind of what we're going.
Well, my point is, is this, and as I've heard everyone speak. What I've, and I try to always operate off of the sense that everyone generally is operating in good faith, which usually is correct. What I'm hearing is, is that he's been given a lump sum budget of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
The coroner is saying, well, that means I can't do this, or I can't do that. I hear the finance committee saying, nobody told you that you can't do that. You absolutely can explore X, Y, and Z. I'm secondarily hearing that the coroner has overspent his entire budget, historically speaking, for the past several years, and that it's been a trend. I'm also trusting that the finance committee has done a good job, and we just passed a budget amendment to increase his budget because he overspent his budget for this past year, and there have been issues with certain compensation being paid frankly twice for the same services, which in my mind is a significant problem. And I think we've ratcheted that issue down, which was based on some historical misunderstandings about whether or not someone should be entitled to be paid a salary, and then also pay a per-trip fee while also driving a county vehicle that is also funded with free gas. So that's a secondary component there. What I'm trusting, and I want to hear from the finance committee, is I want to hear what the budget is, and I want to hear a response from the finance committee, who are my fellow learned colleagues, to address these issues and hear their thought process. We're not passing anything today, and I want to hear, I heard from Mr. Fowler, I want to hear from the finance committee, and I want to be deliberative and methodical about the process. So let's move on. All right, Mr. Newsom.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to introduce our finance committee, there's Commissioner Gray, Commissioner Johnson, and myself. Probably approximately five weeks ago, we started meeting and going line by line through the budget process, spirited conversations on a lot of items, very thoughtful input into where, what should be done with the budget, and really scrutinizing it, because like most of you know, we only got a certain amount of money, and we got a lot of things that we have to pay for. So I appreciate the work of the finance committee. I appreciate the work of our county administrator, our assistant county administrator, Martha Henley, and all of our department heads. It's a lot of work. They start in January, and we get it in May. So now I want to turn it over to assistant administrator, Scott Anderson, and he's going to walk you through.
Thank you, Chairman Newsom, and I would like to echo your comments and thank the finance committee for all their hard work. It's been a long process getting up to where we are now, and I think we have a good budget recommendation. Would also like to thank Martha, Wendy, and the whole finance department. There's been a lot of hours put in on preparing this budget, and department managers and staff did a great job this year keeping the requests in line with current fiscal year, and only asking for increases where needed.
Can I say one thing? I feel to do something. The finance committee is bringing a recommendation to the full commission that we approve the budget at seventy-three million, oh thirty-six, one sixty-three. And that's our, we voted unanimously to bring that to the full commission, so. Now.
Thank you, Commissioner, and to piggyback on that.
For today or for later, for today or for later on?
No, that's, we're making as a recommendation.
Okay, we're receiving the recommendation.
That is correct.
Okay.
Right, and this budget process, to piggyback off that, is fluid. We do have some adjustments to bring forward to you today, but we'll go through the current recommendation from the finance committee, and then I'll talk to you about some additional recommendations that staff would like to bring to the full commission. Because as Chairman Newsom said, this process began in January, department managers preparing the budget, turning it into finance, and then we met with, had review hearings with each department to go through the line items, and presented it to the finance committee, and here we are today with a recommendation. During that process, we have had some additional items come up. I would like to point out that the coroner's requests are not included in the current recommendation. It is for the one hundred and eighty-five thousand per the finance committee's recommendation. We also have seen, for Mr. Starki's presentation earlier, a large increase in group health costs, as well as our risk management insurance fund. And with that, we'll go to your budget books, and your first page there is the proposed budget from the finance committee. And you have a history of the current fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which will show where we, what the budget is, and then what our proposed budget of FY twenty-one and twenty-two will be. And the general fund, we're showing an increase of five point four percent from approximately fifty-two, fifty-three million up to fifty-five point eight million. And, you know, approximately one point nine of that million is the group health fund increases. Our capital improvements went up slightly, one point four percent. We have money in for the alternate dispute resolution, a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred dollars, and that is funded by a grant. We have had money, approximately twenty-eight thousand, set aside in the court system, and the state agreed to allow us to charge fees, or the courts to charge fees to hire a mediator to try to get caught up with the backlog in cases. The special services district fund is a two point one percent increase, and the budget this year does have a surplus there. Solid Waste Enterprise Fund is basically, the M and O is flat, and the capital L is down by twenty-five percent. That is adjusted on an annual basis, depending on what equipment or site development needs there are. Confiscated funds are up slightly from the DA's office, the sheriff's office, and ADDU. And the DH Building Fund, it looks like there's great changes there, but it's just a difference in reporting from the new software transition we have. In prior years, there was gross numbers reported, this year it's netted out. But we're in good shape there. Our lease commercial fund is down slightly this year. Insurance was just added in twice last year inadvertently, so we trued that up. And our grants fund is down slightly, but we do have a revision to that. I'll cover on the next page. And the law library fund is up, but we just report that and don't mention it. So if we look at the bottom, total for our budgets is up from seventy point nine million to seventy-three million. And that's approximately three percent increase. So we flip to the next page, I'm just going to cover the adjustments since the finance committee recommendation, and there's a column in there that says changes after finance committee. And one of them is an addition of a custodian too. We have a large event center that's been added out of Northwest, Northwest branch of the library, and we need an additional custodian. In the special services district fund, we've added, requesting fifteen thousand dollars for park security at Robert Cross, and that'll be off-duty officers on holidays and weekends where we think that there will be a large crowds. The solid waste enterprise fund, we would like to add eighty thousand dollars in. This is a carryover from the shed that was approved from the commission. We are seeing, experiencing issues with cost increases as well as delivery times. Our latest update is it may be December before we see materials come in, so we're in limbo on that one. And then below, I mentioned the grants fund. This is the three hundred thousand dollars was added in for the CDVGDR. And the date fund is fifty thousand dollars, an increase, that's a drug abuse treatment education. And this is again another one of the items where our new reporting software will allow us to separate that out and show, this is something that we have had every year, but it's just, we're able now to show that separately. So the total for the adjustments is four hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, and that brings the new total for FY twenty-two to seventy-three million, five hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars, which is a three point seven percent increase. But I would like to point out that if we subtracted out the approximate two million or two point two million dollars in increases due to the health plan and risk management insurance, we would be within the one point four percent CPI increase over last year's budget. And we did see some of those increases in all of our service delivery agreements with the city. So all in all, we have a flat budget to present to you.
I have a question.
Bishop Gray.
So with the grant fund and the date fund, if the new software is pulling that out and able to put it in its own cost center or fund, does that mean it comes out of another fund where it was lumped into, or is it?
No, it's just a recording category, you know, within it.
But were those monies accounted for in another fund previously?
Well, the.
Because wouldn't they net out?
The CDVGR, you know, was grant money that we just got within the.
It was approved several years ago, and going into, when you first put into the budget process, I didn't know what to put there, that's what went into the original, I didn't know how much it's going to be. But that's, that was pretty, I'm not taking it late, I'm not saying it. Just name it, we're getting sorry from, you know. It's from twenty seventeen somewhere.
I think the question is, is the money being moved to its own separate account has it been taken out of the other accounts, previously been reported in?
No, it's not being moved from the other one.
Okay, so these are additional costs previous to this year's budget? Right, so I guess my question is, if we've had this drug abuse and treatment education program, that was originally accounted for in another line item, in another fund, right?
It was in, it was actually in the general fund. It was budgeted fifty thousand in revenues and fifty thousand in expenditures, which was net zero. It was, it's a, this is from fines in the courts, and it really should have had its own fund many, I mean, many years ago, but since it was only two line items, it was set up in the general fund. And what happened was, is every year, whatever was netted out, if they received, it was netted out in the reserve fund balance. It would show that that was a restricted part, a restricted amount in the fund balance of the general fund. But since we have our new software, we've pulled it out and put it in its own fund.
Gotcha.
It's just an accounting function.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's cool, thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else?
I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
What does this mean in terms of the recommendation from the finance committee? Does that mean you guys go back and reconsider this, or you just put it on the table for the entire commission to consider?
I was gonna, to all with respect to the coroner, with respect to the overall budget.
The changes at the finance committee, in regards to this one, the changes.
Oh, gotcha.
I think that, for clarification, the finance committee's recommendation was page one here, the seventy-three million, thirty-six, one sixty-three. That was before these changes were just shown to us after we concluded our recommendation. So the budget committee has not had an opportunity to review that and/or, you know, make a formal recommendation on that.
Yeah, and that's what I'm asking, what is, what?
I think it's a fair point, so we would, what I would humbly suggest is we probably would move forward with formal adoption of the budget with an eye towards the fact that we're going to be amending and relying upon the finance committee to make adjustments, as opposed to, I mean, just being very realistic about it. It's a moving target, and you gotta start somewhere.
We have until the end of June to consider the staff's amended recommendation.
Yeah, so we could have another budget committee meeting to review this and amend our recommendation.
I'm not opposed either way, I just don't want to overturn the finance committee. I know they've put in a lot of hard work ahead of time.
I think typically in the past, that's why the finance committee will present a recommendation, and then any amendments to that will be brought to the full commission, because they will be minimal, as we did today. And I said earlier, this is a fluid process, we may identify a few more things in the next week or two that need to be amended, and we will bring those specific items to the entire commission. Whereas before, everything was presented through the finance committee with their recommendation, we'll bring any amendments to the entire commission.
Because normally, the Finance Committee brings us a budget, and we adopt the recommended budget, and we adopt their recommendation with any changes that we propose from the commission. But right now, we have two budgets in front of us, a recommended budget from the Finance Committee, and we have a staff recommendation to amend the.
I see what you're saying, Commissioner Gray. Reconciliation, I think, would be appropriate. So is there any objection from the Finance Committee for there being an appropriate meeting for y'all to be able to reconcile staff? We would like a comprehensive sort of collaborative budget and to know that everyone's on the same sheet of music. And I understand that this was a recent development, and I appreciate staff working hard to get that. So can we, could we do that, Mr. Chair?
It's normally, you know, we present the budget. That's the reason why I presented the budget that we passed in the Finance Committee at the seventy-three million.
Sure.
And basically, it really goes to seventy-three-five because of these additions. Now also, just like.
It's pretty nominal.
Just like Mr. Addison just said, it is a fluid situation. It changes.
Sure.
It's gonna change again.
Right.
So it's, at some point, if.
We're gonna have to cut it off.
Right.
Right.
And then the full commission can pass whatever, we pass amendments all the time to the budget, you know, through the year.
Sure, sure, I think that's.
That does not come back through the Finance Committee.
The, yes. All right, very well. Are we all good? Do we have any questions about the issues relative to the coroner's budget? Okay.
So, here again, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may ask, are they gonna reconsider that? Because now we have the coroner's request in front of us. We may, we have the staff's request in front of us. We have the recommended finance budget in front of us. And the staff is saying they're gonna bring back additional changes. So we're sitting here, and I agree, that is very fluid. It's kind of hard for me to figure out, how do we go, one by one? Do we adopt one full budget? How do we do this?
Well, I want to say what my perspective is. I can't speak for anyone else. I, first of all, I think that staff, you know, operates at a greater degree of specificity with the department heads. Commission's job to set budgets, or set an overall budget. Finance Committee review things, reviews things more at the department head level in terms of an aggregate amount. I don't know that, I'm just gonna speak very blunt. As y'all know, that I have a history of doing, I don't know that every department head wants us at the, at a full commission meeting to dig into every penny and how it's spent and whether or not it's consistent with the line items that they proposed at the beginning of the year. So I, I'm satisfied with any explanation that the Finance Committee has given in terms of how they've arrived at their numbers. I understand that there's been a lot of analysis of other folks wanting to ask about those, that analysis relative to the coroner's budget. I'm happy to open that up for discussion.
If I can make a statement right there, it'd be great.
Sure.
Under our general fund, MNO budget, page eight. General fund, MNO, kind of give you more of an insight into the budget.
That was what I was looking at earlier, which.
Thirty-seven hundred, line ten forty-one.
Yes, yes, sir. So if we look at the approved budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it was a hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. And that was the approved budget based on what was requested and approved for that year. It went over, what did we end up going over, to two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand?
Two forty-six, two thirty-six.
So.
What page you on? Page eight.
Yes, so that was a, about a forty-six thousand dollar over, overage on that budget. But my understanding from my interactions with the Finance Committee are that, you know, twenty twenty-one was an outlier, which I think everyone would agree that it's an outlier historically. Secondarily, that a lot of the cost overruns that were analyzed did not have anything to do with it being an outlier of a year. There were, there were other, other issues that were going on. So I believe that the thought is from the Finance Committee, and I could be wrong, is that there were cost overruns that were consistent with some spending that was out of line with county policy. We need to ratchet that back down, let's put it at a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And that we also have the ability to move through the year. And if truly, Mr. Coroner, who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, does a great job, if he can't operate, I think we can check in at six months and let's see that. Let's also see how we're actually spending our budget. And let's get a benchmark of that and get some data. And if we truly need to adjust that, then so be it. But I think we need to see an environment where we've eliminated some of these cost overruns that don't appear to be consistent with the county's fiscal policy. And, and once you remove those things from the equation, I think then we have a better picture of the overall financial expenditures and our responsibility to the taxpayers.
It's only a three percent decrease.
It's only a three percent decrease.
Yeah, but I still can't digest how you gonna control, and nobody even gave you the answer yet, the transportation. You cannot control the transportation. If it's a set price of five-hundred-and-fifty bucks, you know, you, that has to, nobody told me how you gonna control that.
Because, because it's not about controlling it, it's about where you spend the money at. So the money is there.
Okay.
Well, let me answer that question. I can do that by talking with other coroners.
Right.
There's not another coroner that I've talked to that pays five-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a trip to Atlanta.
Okay, so go back now, so is it an option?
Here's an option, there's a very good option, just go to Lee County.
Okay.
The county owns a pickup truck with a camper shell body on it, and they hire their off-duty firefighters or their police or any sheriff's office that wants to, and they pay them a flat hundred-and-fifty dollars a trip.
Okay. So we use it, whoever we use it, is charging the five-fifty?
Five-fifty, so there's your initial savings right there. That takes your transportation back to what it should be.
Okay, all right. I mean, see, that's what I'm after, how you.
Oh, I think it's a good point. I think it's a real good point.
Because I was telling you, I see across the state of Georgia, if you look on the website now, you have counties that actually contract their services out for deceased bodies transport. So that's where I was with, so how, where did he get that five-fifty? So, you know, that's the option.
But there's.
But I'm okay with it. I just want to know, is it something else?
A lot of these cost overruns get reduced or eliminated with the go-live of our morgue that we're building. Right? So, you know, some of the challenges we have of paying people to go down in the middle of the night previously, the kind of the overworking and the dependency on a person to go unlock the morgue can be solved with a keypad. You know, right now, there's some legal issues that Phoebe has expressed about chain of custody of all but paupers. And those are operational issues that we're gonna have to talk through with them in a temporary capacity until we can get our morgue up and running. Then, you know, then we'll, we'll look at operations, use of deputy coroners, call schedules, et cetera, to find a better way so that we don't burn out our resources and spend money where we don't have to.
Okay. Yeah, just, you know, specifically.
Commissioner Gaines?
No, I mean, I trust my Finance Committee, just specifically, that's what I was asking about.
Understood.
The other stuff, I understand the whole logistics of the past and future is like, okay. So I, I trust you guys. I think you're being fair. I mean, don't get me wrong, I think you're being fair with the whole opposite, so.
Understood completely. Commissioner Gaines, did you have something?
I, I just want to say, you know, that this, this way of funding the coroner's office doesn't quite make, doesn't make much sense to me. If every year, we're having to adjust it, but still we go ahead every year and pass a budget that we know we're gonna have to adjust, that doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I look at it a little bit differently. I look at it from the perspective of we, we have had significant overruns, and then this year's the first year that's been brought to my attention that the overruns, many of the overruns were not consistent with county policy. And then secondarily, we have another moving target, which is, we've got this morgue, which is coming in that presumably is going to eliminate some overhead. So what I'd like, I always believe in just saying, let's, let's put things at a baseline, and then let's see how we operate and make sure that we, we've eliminated the things that weren't consistent with county policy. We've got a new, we got the morgue, which is supposed to reduce overhead. We hope it reduces overhead. And then let's look at it, you know, six, nine months down the road and see how we're doing. That's how I view it, but.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Because we are on the cusp of change.
Yes, ma'am.
With, with the way he's operating.
Yes, ma'am.
But in the past, that's been the pattern of, that we just know we're gonna have this cost overrun, we still go ahead and adopt it. But this time is a little bit different. We are, there are gonna be some major changes. We're gonna have to ask the, and we have a new Finance Chair, who obviously looks at state-of-the-art in other counties, and that's good. But I think what we're talking about with the coroner's office is kind of a deep dive and some changes coming on. And, and, and we have to realize that this hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars is kind of a baseline, and that could change.
I think we're gonna be looking at true numbers this time here as well as we.
No, we're not. We just said that we are not likely to be looking at.
Yeah, but here's, you know, we'll be able to, as the chairman said, we'll be able to look at it. We'll be able to look at these numbers in six months and determine, you know, where we are, where we need to go and so forth. So I think we need to just let this play on out and we go forward like we are. And then if there's adjustments that need to be made, then so. But I know that during the COVID season, that probably put an induced amount of death that would not normally, hopefully not normally go forward as we move forward into, into this new budget.
But that's based on two major changes. That is the morgue coming online, and number two, the money that we've been spending in a way that we shouldn't have been spending it. Am I correct? Those two.
I don't know that I agree with that characterization.
I would say.
I wouldn't agree with that characterization.
Okay.
So, and I, you know.
I thought that's what we were saying.
I think at the department head level, it may have been, it may have been getting expended in a way that wasn't consistent with county policy. That's.
So that's what I meant.
And I think we need to let that sleeping dog lay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that the alternative dispute resolution, the Law Library and the Grant Fund, if I'm not mistaken, those, don't, my taxpayer dollar, those are all grants or funded through some other source.
I believe you're correct.
That is correct.
So that, that amount of money is not actually on the taxpayer dollar. Dollar, it's outside money coming in from other places to fund it.
Uh, let's, can we?
Yes, Commissioner Newsom.
Back to the coroner, I think that with some budget guidance, and I think with, with maybe making some improvements in transportation, if you look at transportation costs at five-fifty, that's, every coroner that I've talked to said that's, that's way out of line. Just making some simple moves can eliminate a lot of that cost that we're doing now that we don't need to do. And there's some other things, and I, and I think that the Finance Committee would be glad to sit down with a coroner.
Sure, I think that's all helpful.
And to try to, you know, and try to work through those issues and then, and get it, and get it where he stays on budget. I mean.
I agree, I think we're all on the same team. All right, we're gonna close that discussion and move on. Mr. Addison?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lee?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you for asking, though.
Commissioner Newsom?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Newsom, you did a really good job leading Finance Committee. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gray?
Yeah, I want to thank Commissioner Newsom for his leadership on the Finance Committee. Also wanted to give Darty County Public Works a huge pat on the back for their kids' fishing rodeo they held at the pond at Radium Springs this weekend. It was very well attended. Fish didn't bite on my line and my daughter's line as much as I had hoped. But it was a great time had by all, and I would encourage everybody to go take a walk around there, check it out. It's, it's on the old golf course there, has some beautiful new paved trails that have been installed. And I think it's a, it's a part of the whole Radium Springs environment that most people don't consider because they're, they're kind of, maybe they're just distracted by the beauty of the springs and the work we've done there. But please go check it out and, you know, do look for future events. It was great.
Thank you. Commissioner Gaines?
I, I keep hearing that, that we have nothing to do with the line items in the departmental budgets, but it's hard for me to understand if a department head can move money around in his budget in whatever way he wants to do. I just find that difficult to believe. I just want to put that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, we're adjourned.